The meeting of the Prairie View City Council will now come to order. August 12, 2019. Ms. Fines, would you serve the floor, please?
Councilmember Rowland.
President.
Councilmember Randall. Councilmember Jones.
Yes.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Wallace.
Thank you, ma'am. And if you would stand for the invocation of the pledge of our illustrious former mayor of Hempstead, Mayor Singleton, would you do us the pleasure with a brief invocation?
No, I wouldn't do it.
Or your cohort next to you, that's fine. Oh, Mr. Easy, would you bless us this evening? It's a pleasure to have our EDC president here.
God, thanks for bringing us this day. Thank you for protecting us. Thank you to let us have a productive meeting and let everything run smoothly and let everything go cohesive to your will. In God's name, amen.
And now for the pledge of allegiance, says the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we have a presentation. Ms. Monica Pierre with Live Oak Bank.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As she gets the PowerPoint going, introduce myself again. My name is Monica Pierre from Live Oak Bank. Our bank is a specialty bank that focuses on financing, infrastructure, and growth and development for rural communities. So I'm coming this afternoon to give my presentation in reference to how our bank can assist with the economic growth that's foreseen here in Prairie View and hopefully the nuance of bringing in a wastewater treatment facility specifically for the city of Prairie View. Because as you currently know, your wastewater goes to the university. So I'll provide you some information in reference to how the bank can assist with that and the steps it would take to go forward if this is advantageous for the city. A little bit of my background. Today actually marked my anniversary with one year with the bank. However, prior to being at the bank, I had 23 years in with USDA Rural Development where I was the Assistant Area Director for Water and Wastewater. So it kind of went hand in hand when I left the agency and went over to the private sector to kind of help build that bridge and gap the, to help fill the gap between private sector lending and government lending and to find ways to assist expediently and go through a lot of that red tape of the government to get things done a little bit quicker out in our communities. I did bring some informational brochures. I put them on the front table along with my business card. I was fortunate enough to reside here in Texas and to stay here with the new job. The bank is located in Wilmington, North Carolina, but they let me stay here in Texas, so I work from home. So if you have any questions or concerns regarding the presentation or how the bank can help impact the future of the city, please don't hesitate to contact me. You may just want to hit me up to say hi, I don't mind. Okay, let's hit it. Okay, we're gonna dance together. So let's, here's a picture of our team. This is my vacation hair right here. So this is my work hair on this picture, same person. As you see, we have a team of three. Within that team, we are considered the loan officers and sale team. Behind us, we do have our underwriters, our closing team and packaging team. So delayed funding can impact our system's total infrastructure. We know that. We know that time is money and we want to show you how working with our bank can assist in speeding up the process. Lost revenues, as you have faulty systems, you lose money. Operating and maintenance become very expensive because you're continuously trying to patch things. The costs will increase for bids as you wait for federal dollars to come in. And on top of that, you can possibly receive fines for violations through your city. Raising interest rates. Rates don't stay the same. That'll change the payment that will be due on any money borrowed. And of course inflation. Typical funding challenges. Factors that delay your system's improvements may also include loan application packages. Nobody wants to put together those long packets. It's always good to have somebody that has that experience to get your packages done for you. Timeliness, timing and uncertainties, the length of the approval process. We have seen where with potential government funding, it's taken up to three years for approval. Here at the bank, we have actually gotten projects approved with the assistance of engineering within six months. Environmentals and preliminary engineering requirements are different between funding requirements for federal dollars as opposed to private dollars. Cost overruns and bid expirations. There are definitely hindrances on how funds are used in the event that you have cost overruns and your permitting requirements. And of course, natural disasters. When those disasters hit, federal dollars become tied up, which makes it hard for you to get your hands on them in a timely manner. So available funding options, we got to be fair and let everybody know what else is out there. And I'm sure you're very aware of other funding sources. You have your grants. Those are funds that don't have to be repaid. Municipal bonds that can be voted on by the city. You have state revolving funds. Those are funds that come from the federal government to the state government and the state government then hinders it out. You have the USDA Direct program, which is where I used to work. We have the USDA Guaranteed program, which is a partnership with the bank and USDA. And you have straight conventional lending. Some same benefits of the USDA Direct program, but noticeable differences in the Guaranteed program. We, the bank, will help with the application. So it doesn't have to be at the burden of the city. We'll work towards completing the application for you and we'll submit that application to USDA. For financing, we can go up to 40 years in getting your loan financed. You may not need that, however, it's a better option and a lot of times it could help decrease what your monthly payments are. For those areas that are close to areas that could be annexed into larger cities, our program provides them with that 1926B protection so they don't have to be worried about being grouped into the larger metropolitan area. And a simplified PER, which is a preliminary engineering report for our engineers on hand. You don't have to go through the rigorous requirements of the government in your submission of an engineering report. We can also refinance any existing USDA loans into a new project. So if there's any outstanding debt that may be tied into the project that's to be foreseen, that money can be released by being refinanced in and giving more space for your new debt. And the bank also provides interim financing, which kind of helps with your construction costs to get everything started while you're possibly waiting on other funding. Some of the key factors in working with an experienced lender, fast and efficient. Again, I had 23 years with USDA. The gentleman that was at the beginning that showed our team, the black gentleman, he was also...
Hold up. He's not logged out of the corner. We have to hold up. All right, council?
Really? Brian, did he leave?
Once he leaves the room, he's not logged out of the corner. Okay, you may continue.
Fast and efficient process. Mr. Kent Evans was actually the National Director for USDA out of Washington DC. So that helps our process because we know who to go through to get things completed. All USDA correspondence is handled by the lender directly, allowing the city to focus on the city. And industry expertise. They hired us out of the field because we know what we're working on so we can continue to move things forward. Construction monitoring. You would be assigned someone at the bank that is specifically working with you and your construction financing. So the objective with this project, in the event that the city was to look at a facility that would handle the new and incoming development in the city and have the capacity needed, it could estimate out to be about a $15 million project. With that taken into consideration, doing a split finance deal between USDA Direct program and the Live Oak Bank USDA Guaranteed program 50/50, we could get a really good blended rate of about 4.919%. That's 40-year fixed. In the event that we want to do some type of 20-year with a 20-year reset that keeps your payments low and so those funds, again, that are needed for the city to do other things are readily available. So again, combined, best of both worlds, guaranteed and direct. The lender underwrites everything. We'll take care of all the paperwork for you and submit the application for USDA. And the lender can fund 100% of the interim loan. I do want to say that because this is the area that I previously serviced with USDA. The lady who replaced me, she's still learning the process. So as a positive, I could assist her in ensuring that everything got done. Wouldn't leave Prairie View. The simplified engineering report. Again, information will be submitted from the engineer in reference to the project. Sometimes with the direct program, it becomes a little bit more lengthy. There's more things that the engineer has to provide. A lot of times you have USDA employees who may not be as versed. They're not engineers. So to have someone not an engineer review an engineer's work, that defeats the purpose. This way, it gives the engineer the freedom to be the engineer and to make those decisions because that's what they went to school for. That's his profession. Simplified is the best word. With the 2018 farm bill that was passed by the president, it helped to increase the definition of rural. When Prairie View hits that 20,000 in population, it'll still be considered rural. The rural definition will be changing to go up to 50,000. So we want to ensure that you understand you'd still be eligible for different government programs as the city continues to grow. So the eligibility requirements in reference to the agency, eligible projects would be your drinking water, your sanitary sewer, stormwater drainage, solid waste. The applicant, cities, the city of Prairie View. And eligibility requirements. You are considered a rural community. The bank would underwrite it for your approval. Legal capacity of the city, we all know that's already there. And then, of course, the information submitted by the engineer for the preliminary engineering report, which just says that the project is a doable viable project. You guys have good drinking water, so we're not really concerned about drinking water. We can bypass that. But when you're ready to expand, we're here for you. But we really want to focus on your eligible sewer and wastewater project. So again, as the city looks to enlarge, and you think about what you have now and the difficulties and problems that you may be facing with it being serviced through the university, this will give the city the opportunity to have their own wastewater treatment system, which generates more revenue, right? Because you're going to have new businesses coming into town and you want those businesses revenue, those payments to be coming to the city of Prairie View and not to the university. So a way, again, to build stable revenue for the city or to have those necessities, it's got to go somewhere, right? Might as well have it coming to your city's system for your system to process it and for you to be receiving those payments. Working with USW, they can assist with your rate studies to see what rates would need to be issued out to those businesses for what the payments would be and to see how much revenue would need to be generated in order to withstand that particular loan amount. And again, if that is the size or that capacity is needed for your city, you want to have enough growth for new businesses coming in, but also to provide the service that the current residents need here as well. Stormwater drainage, if we're flooding around here, we can help out with that too. I think y'all had some issues with the last storm that came through. We can assist with stormwater drainage as well. And nobody likes a landfill, but we will finance them. So financing options available for private for-profit water systems, we can assist in those instances that they were not in the readily available eligible category. We can assist with including those for-profit systems as well and obtaining financing through the bank. So that's to pass on to any systems that you may know. So working with an experienced engineering firm, I believe you have one on hand now, Trilogy. They'll become very knowledgeable of what is needed with USDA's Guaranteed program and ensure that that process is done expeditiously. Again, working with myself and Mr. Evans with 23 years and 25 years on the books, will know exactly what those PERs need to have in detail to ensure a one submission for approval of engineering reports. So the top reasons to consider this product that I'm bringing to you this evening. Improving your system infrastructure, expedient funding. We can get you then in six months. 40-year fixed rates. So you have a longer term to make your payment out, keeping your payments shorter. Simplified preliminary engineering reports. That keeps your engineer happy. Population is increasing to 50,000, so we have plenty of time to utilize federal funding for the city of Prairie View. And everything is done in-house as far as packaging and servicing to keep it a one-stop shop and make it very easy to work with our bank. Our key takeaways. Infrastructure financing is more than interest rates. There's time in your money. We need to leverage partnerships to get you the best rates possible. And considering how delaying a project will impact your system, impacting your system reduces your revenues. We want to get the money and get the money now to the city. Any questions or concerns? Good?
I have a question.
Okay.
So on a $15 million note, what would the monthly payment be?
It would be an annual payment. It would be about $700,000 annually. And that's with the blended rate between USDA and the bank. Now, the bank's rates are floating, so as of now, rent rates change. But the USDA's rates are quarterly. So as we get to a point where you really take it into consideration, we can give firmer rates to assist with better numbers.
And in your work with the city of Prairie View, are we able to afford $700,000 a year with our budget, Ms. Pierre?
With working with the city of Prairie View, with the blended 50/50, based on your financial data, yes, you can currently afford the bank's rate and the bank's note 7.5 million and the USDA rate with the USDA note of 7.5. So it blended together, yes, it is feasible.
You can afford $700,000 a year out of our budget?
Based on the financials that I was provided, yes. I didn't want to come without that number.
All right.
I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Counsel? We have been working with Trilogy Engineering. They've came before us and gave a presentation on the wastewater treatment facility. We've been working with them over the, I guess, probably 12 to 14 months. We had city council meeting, we had a workshop. But we're at the point where it's going to cost about $48,000 for the actual roadmap, which is the plan, the comprehensive plan or the CIP. I think we can finance and your company would be a good financing in, but we need that middle, we're at that middle spot. And can you help us figure out? I don't think USDA or the federal government has any current grants available because we have to get, like, our CIP plan is outside of going on 10 years. And we would need that to be able to get, to say, this is how much it's going to cost us to actually put this wastewater treatment facility. Our issue is not having about $48,000 to $60,000 to pay for this to move forward. Can you help us or is there a way? Can we wrap that into the loan? Or can you talk to us about how we can do that to move forward?
Put that in the interim so that that's possible. We can discuss that more. Whatever the needs are for this particular project, we can get those needs taken care of.
Can I ask you a quick question? I guess the thing that kind of concerns me and from the financing, you may not have a question, but answer. But for the wastewater treatment plan, how would a person come up with a projected need for our community when most of the needs, wastewater needs, come from what the university projects in terms of enrollment? And one year they're projecting high numbers and the next year they're saying, well, we're cutting it off. I mean...
Well, that's what the benefit that USA would provide for you because they could assist with the rate studies. They would go through and take that data and information of what's already there and take into consideration the number of connections that you have for your water. Normally, if you have water, you're going to need sewer. The water has to go somewhere. So that helps to count those numbers and they could help put that plan together. $15 million may be a lot. It's just an estimate, kind of based on populations of other cities. It may be too much. You may need more. But as you kind of take into consideration what may be coming with the university being here and the expansion and possible easements and things of that nature, the growth and new businesses coming on the corners, you may have to have more capacity. And you would definitely not want to enter into building a facility and then three years later, you have to come back in because now you may have TCEQ saying you don't have enough capacity with the growth coming. So working with your partners that help you with your CIP and the planning of your city helps to project that growth and basically kind of give a, I don't want to say a dream wish, but it kind of puts a picture on the wall as to what you need to allow your city to continue to grow.
And Trilogy, who has done them? We've had those discussions and meetings with them as well. The capacity on 15 would carry us for a while.
Yes, ma'am.
First, I just want to say I'm very aware of your work at USDA and all the people that you have helped.
I hope it was good.
Thank you. Because you have done great work in your career.
I appreciate it.
I think I just heard that we couldn't afford as a city $48,000 for a comprehensive study. So and then we acquired $700,000 as an annual payment. So I guess, Ms. Pierre, what documents did you look at? Let the citizens know. What documents did you review that would help us know that we as a city could afford an annual payment of $700,000 while making our personnel and other payments that we have to make? That concerns me.
Well, since we have our finance, JJ, would you be able to answer that question? Are we on the predicament to be able to?
I'd have to review it. I was just playing with some numbers here.
Well, let's let Ms. Pierre answer.
I just wanted to know what you had in front of you to review.
In order for us to do just the initial review of a city, we take their last two to three years of their last audit of financials. Yes, ma'am.
And we do have the money to pay for the comprehensive.
Two things. Two things. I just, I want to be clear. When I, the $60,000 is not something that we can necessarily finance, right? We can finance what Ms. Pierre talked about, the annual payment or a wastewater treatment facility of that size. That is not the size that we have of our scope that we first put out there, but those are two different things. The plan, there's not a lot of grant money for us to be able to come up with the plan needed, which is about $48,000 to $60,000, which is a different conversation than the revenue needed to be able to make this monthly or annual payment. Those are two different things, so I want to make sure that I clarify that.
Oh, but EDC can pay for the comprehensive.
Okay, hold on, hold on. Let's be reckoned. Counsel, anybody else in council?
I just want to thank you for your diligence. And as long as the pledge blessed you, kind of getting face to book for and helping us out. I'm pretty sure that this could be something of part of that.
Just take us into consideration. I do have a son that's a freshman at PB now, praise the Lord. I have a daughter that's a senior and this little one right here. And I am a single mom. I'll probably be following them, so let's get it. I'm going to need the blush. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. Ms. Brute? Can the light switch back up, please? Thank you.
There's a couple of things I'd like to know. It's about budget time, so I would like to encourage you to put this budget online or give us printed copies. It's very difficult to follow conversations of numbers without paperwork. The other thing I would like to ask, is there a timeframe for how long there is between meetings and approving the minutes? I don't know, but I'd like to know.
Well, from one meeting to the next.
Okay. And then where are we on the smart city? I haven't heard us talk about that in a while. And if we're going to promote ourselves as a smart city, I would suggest that we first get a decent website because we still don't have a really good website. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is for you people up here to speak up. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Ashley Jackson?
Okay, good evening, everyone. I have some things that I'd like to bring you all aware of. First, last city council meeting, Councilman Rowland asked for the most recent inspection report to be placed on the agenda. It was not, of course. I checked online on Friday at 5:00 PM when it was available and it was not put on the agenda. This is a recurring issue. It continues to happen. I'm not sure why. I'm not going to say any assumptions, but it keeps happening. So I want to make you aware of that. Panther Hill Apartments, the inspection records are public. I have copies of every single building as well as the council does. And things that are important like foundation, electrical, plumbing, all failed. Not just in some places, all. All of them. And we still continue to have issues. There's constant water shut-offs that we don't even know about. And the property claims that they don't even receive notification of it as well. And now I've been made aware that the property owes $131,000 on their water bill for the city. And they have not paid since they arrived. If it's not true, then I'd like to see the documentation. I know that's part of the record as well. Also, there's a bug infestation. It's not being taken care of. There's spiders, black widows, brown whupus, everywhere. And it's not being taken care of. There's been no pest control. It is. You don't live there, but it's okay.
Please, please, this is not a conversational time. This, Jackson, let me let you state yours, please.
So now, since I'm constantly coming and I'm still going to come, I want to present solutions, not just complaints. Yeah, solutions. Would you like to hear them?
No, not a conversation, please. That's Ms. Jackson, you've got two minutes. And go to the next person, please.
First, when a council member or multiple council members present an item that they want on the agenda, it should be there. Second, there should be someone that's going out to inspect the property. Even now that we know that Bureau Veritas will not go back out because the property is occupied. But we have the records. We know that these major things have failed or passed partial, which is basically a fail. These issues are not being fixed. It's not safe. It's constantly going on. And like I said, you'll continue to see my face. And you'll probably see some more faces after me. But I don't believe that you all have gone to the property to see these issues, actually. They've shown you the pretty stuff. But you haven't seen the rooms that are missing borders that leave the walls exposed. You haven't seen the ceiling, the cracks in the ceiling that make leaks. I have those in my room if you'd like to see. They haven't been fixed. I can show you those. And also, just take heed to safety. It's not, it's not something that you can keep bypassing. And I think you'll see that in the future. Thank you.
Catherine Reed?
To the council members. Good evening, everyone. I'm Catherine Reed. Can you all hear me? I usually talk loud, that's why I ask. I didn't notice until I got here that it says that if you want to have a matter placed on the next regular city council agenda, and that's what I have two questions that I would like to have placed on the agenda for next week, that's all. The first one, I came to a meeting here last month about the city... The first one, I look, I came to a meeting here last month about the city charter and my question is that, I understand that you all, the council members want to discuss and possibly make some amendments to the city charter. And my question is, I would like on the agenda, the name of the amendments that they want changed, and I want to know why or the reason that they want to make them change. Those are my only two questions, but I do want to make a comment since I've been here and maybe if, if it's inappropriate, let me know. Why are we going into executive session at the first, at the beginning of the meeting? Why isn't that at the end? Because that's something y'all gonna go and discuss. And when I leave home and come here, I come to go through a meeting, not for y'all leaving go into executive session, but maybe I'm wrong or other people don't feel that way. Thank you.
Sylvia Sedia?
Good evening, council.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to just make, I guess, three kind of summary comments related to cooperation, related to city pride and related to efficiency. The first thing I would kindly like to ask the city is if, when you look at our website, there is a posting on that website under latest news about the ineligible of a city council member. That's not news. That needs to be archived. It's a May 8th posting. And in addition to that, the council member that it refers to is here on the dais voting. I don't want anybody searching for our city to see that kind of information when they, when they look at our website. They find it in archives, fine, but that's three, four months ago. Let's get over that, okay? I think that's very important and it could be the source of why we have people who want to change the city charter. I have already, because everything is about power and control. We need cooperation. We need people to leave their egos at the door who are up on this dais and lead this city. So I'm gonna ask if you would kindly get rid of that, put it in archives and move on. The second thing I would like to say is that there's an incredible inefficiency on our agenda. If you look at the last probably five items on the agenda, those are the most important things to the city of Prairie View folks. Budget items, items that relate to amendments to the city charter, charter, but I, I would like to know about our budget. What can we afford and where are we? Where are we with our bills? Where are we with our plans as a city? And, and to have to wait till 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock is an incredible inefficiency and it's unfair to the city of Prairie View. So I would kindly ask that there be a lot more serious consideration taken with regard to how we set out the agenda for not just the council, but for the residents. In addition to that, I would kindly ask that we not have reports given during the city council meeting. Put those on the website, print them out and put them outside. This is one of the most educated, educated...